We're good.
Good evening. Can we start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. So, the mission statement of the agency. The mission statement of the agency is as follows. The mission of the Ulster County Industrial Development Agency is to advance the job opportunities, general prosperity, and long-term economic vitality of Ulster County residents by targeting tax incentives, bonds, and other assistance to foster creation and attraction of new business and the retention and expansion of existing business. I'll now introduce members, guests, and staff. I'd like to start with recognizing James Quigley, Town of Ulster Supervisor. Jim's in the room. Thank you, Jim. I also would like to talk about the, or mention the Zinc Eight team, and that's here tonight. Jamie Pomponi, Ron McDonald, Rob Parker, and Mark Maggio. Also with us tonight is General Counsel for the IDA, Shannon Wagner, and Joe Scott. Also in attendance is IDA staff Lisa Purcell and Jay Mahler. And I'd like to also just note that former IDA member Rick Jones is attending the meeting also. It's good to see you, Rick. So, I'll open with my remarks. So, good evening. My name is Michael Hamm. I'm the Chair of the Ulster County Industrial Development Agency in connection with the project, which is subject of the public hearing here tonight. I note that as required by New York law, the agency is live-streaming this public hearing. Today, we are holding the public hearing to allow citizens to make a statement for the record relating to the involvement of the agency with the project. For Zinc Eight Energy Solutions, USA Inc., a New York State corporation. I'll now turn it over to Counsel.
Thank you, Chair. The proposed project consists of the following: the acquisition and installation of certain machinery and equipment and other tangible personal property, including, without limitation, tenant improvement and finish, and the undertaking of various tenant and interior fit-up and other improvements. Collectively, the improvements, the equipment and the improvements being collectively referred to as the project facility, to the building containing approximately 237,000 square feet of space located on parcels of land at 300 Enterprise Drive, Tax Map Number 48.7-1-29.800 in the Town of Ulster, Ulster County, New York. The project facility is to be owned by the company and to be used by the company in connection with its operation of a manufacturing, commercial, industrial facility for commercial, manufacturing, and warehouse space and related uses. The financing of all or a portion of the costs of the foregoing by the issuance of taxable and/or tax-exempt revenue bonds of the agency in one or more issues or series in an aggregate principal amount sufficient to pay all or a portion of the costs of undertaking the project, together with necessary incidental costs in connection therewith, presently estimated to equal approximately $10 million. The payment of a portion of the costs incidental to the issuance of the obligations, including issuance costs of the obligations, and any reserve funds as may be necessary to secure the obligations; the granting of certain other financial assistance within the meaning of the Act with respect to the foregoing, including exemption from certain sales taxes; and the lease or sale of the project facility to the company or such other person as may be designated by the company and agreed upon by the agency. Please note that as of the date of this public hearing, the land and the facility are owned by I Park 87 LLC, the owner, and the company is currently negotiating a lease for space in the facility with the owner in connection with the undertaking of the project. We intend to provide general information on the agency's general authority and public purpose to provide assistance to this proposed project. We will then open the comment period to receive comments from all present who wish to comment on either the proposed project or the financial assistance contemplated by the agency with respect to the proposed project. I'll now pass it back to the Chair.
So, we'll now discuss the amount of financial assistance being considered by the agency. However, before discussing the general information and opening the hearing for public comments, we would like to first describe some details regarding the project as outlined in the completed application. In the application, the company has... The project will create at least 298 jobs following the third year of operation of the project facility. The creation of these jobs will increase local tax revenue and consumer spending in the community. Two, that the company would not undertake this project without the assistance being offered by the agency. Three, that the company understands and recognizes that the assistance being offered by the agency is subject to a clawback under the agency's clawback policy if the company does not complete the project or maintain the required employment levels. The estimated costs of the project are equal to approximately $67,850,000. And the estimated benefits being considered by the agency are described briefly as follows. Number one, sales tax exemption, $2,306,000. And tax-exempt revenue bond financing, $10 million. Please note that no real estate abatement is being granted to the agents, by the agency, to the company in connection with the undertaking of the proposed project. The company is expected to be a tenant in the facility, and the facility is owned by the owner, I Park 87 LLC, and the facility is subject to real property taxes. Please further note that, under the IDA documents, the company will be subject to recapture of the financial assistance upon occurrence of certain recapture events. Examples of recapture events include the failure to complete the proposed project and make the promised investment and maintenance of the promised job levels. I will now turn it back over to Counsel.
Thank you, Chair. The provisions of Chapter 1030 of the laws of 1969 of New York constituting Title I of Article 18A of the General Municipal Law, Chapter 24 of the Consolidated Laws of New York as amended, and Chapter 8, I'm sorry, 787 of the 1976 laws of New York as amended, constituting Section 923 of said General Municipal Law, collectively the Act, authorizes the agency to promote, develop, encourage, and assist in the acquiring, constructing, reconstructing, improving, maintaining, and equipping and furnishing of manufacturing, warehousing, research, commercial, and industrial facilities, among others. The purpose of this public hearing: pursuant to Section 859a2 of the Act, prior to the agency providing any financial assistance of more than $100,000 to any project, the agency, among other things, must hold a public hearing pursuant to Section 859a of the Act with respect to said project. Since the proposed financial assistance to be provided by the agency with respect to the proposed project may exceed $100,000, then prior to providing any financial assistance of more than $100,000 to the proposed project, the agency must hold a public hearing on the nature and location of the project facility and the proposed financial assistance to be provided by the agency with respect to the proposed project. Further, pursuant to Section 147f of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986 as amended, if any portion of the obligations to be issued by the agency is intended to be issued as federally tax-exempt obligations, the interest on which is excluded from gross income of the holders thereof for federal income tax purposes, then prior to issuing such portion of the obligations, the agency must hold a public hearing on the nature and location of the project facility, the issuance of the obligations, and thereafter, the county executive of Ulster County must approve the issuance of the obligations. After consideration of the application received from the company, the members of the agency adopted a resolution on December 21st, 2022, the Inducement Resolution, authorizing the agency to, among other things, conduct this public hearing with respect to the proposed project pursuant to Section 859a2 of the Act and Section 147f of the Code. By way of background, notice of this public hearing was published on January 16th, 2023 in the Daily Freeman, a newspaper of general circulation available to the residents of the Town of Ulster, Ulster County, New York. In addition, as required by New York law, notice of this public hearing is mailed on January 19th to the Town Supervisor of the Town of Ulster, the Chairman of the County Legislature of Ulster County, and the Superintendent and Board of Education President of the Kingston City School District. Lastly, a copy of this public hearing notice was posted on a public bulletin board located at the Town of Ulster Town Hall and on the agency's website. Copies of the notice of this public hearing are available on the table outside of the public hearing room. Now, unless there's any objection, I'm going to suggest waiving the full reading of the notice of this public hearing and instead request that the full text of the notice of this public hearing be inserted into the record of this public hearing. Thank you for no objections. The comments received today at this public hearing will be presented to the members of the agency at or prior to the meeting at which the members will consider whether to approve the undertaking of the proposed project by the agency, the issuance of the obligations by the agency, and the granting by the agency of any financial assistance in excess of $100,000 with respect to the proposed project. The agency currently intends to consider these comments received this evening regarding the proposed project at the meeting of the agency to be held on February 15th, 2023. This meeting, like all meetings of the agency, is open to the public. The notice of this public hearing published in the newspaper indicated that written comments could be addressed to Lisa Purcell, the administrative personnel of the agency. We have received, to date, no written comments prior to this public hearing.
I'll now pass it back to you, Chair, to introduce the members of the project applicant attending the public hearing.
So, I'd like to introduce the following people that are the present for the company. Before I do, I'd just like to recognize Steve Kelly, Chair of Audit from the Ulster County IDA. He just popped into the meeting, just attended. So, anyway, getting back to business, I will now introduce Jamie Pomponi, Rob McDonald, Rob Parker, and Mark Maggio. I imagine I'm going to go to you, right, Ron? So, Ron, who is appearing on behalf of the company, will be describe the proposed project in further detail. Ron?
Okay, well, it's really good to be back here, since I only left last Thursday. So, look, we're really pleased to be able to come to this public hearing and want to thank everybody that we've been dealing with, with the IDA. You've been extremely helpful in guiding us through this process, and we're just happy to be here in Kingston. Before I start, I think there's a couple of things, just to give a bit of background. We had announced here in Kingston, actually, back, I think it was at the end of August with Senator Schumer, that it was our desire to have our first manufacturing plant in the U.S. We were looking at New York, and obviously, we're looking at sites here in Ulster County. Subsequent to that, we did announce, after the IRA was passed, that we had made a definitive decision to move to the United States. We also applied to the state of New York for some assistance to locate in the state. And we were extremely lucky to be able to be with the governor last Thursday up at the site, the I Park 87, at which time we received an incentive award of about $9 million. So, this is sort of the third line that we've got to go through. We've been really pleased to be dealing with this group here. The incentives that are offered by the IDA go a long way into helping us make the decision to make the investment and create the jobs here in Ulster County. There's only two things that I want to highlight. First is that this particular application is for a three-year period, and during that three-year period of time, we are looking at about $14.7 million of investment to get the plant up and running, and we're looking at creating about, I think it's 298 jobs during that three-year period. Some of the public might be confused because the news on Thursday had different numbers. The Empire State Development application is over a five-year period. And so, although it's our, it is our desire to invest $14.7 or almost $15 million in the first three years, the other amount of money would be in the last two to three years of the project, and that's where we really ramp up production. So, it's about $15 million first three years, and it's about $50 million in the back end. So, we continue, we intend to continue to make the investments at our first plant location. Somebody asked me today about, is this, you know, just your phase one? It's phase one of a multi-phase at the site of the plant. So, that's what we want to make sure that they know, that this is three years, 298, $14.7, five years, close to 400, maybe 500, and about $65 million in total. So, you know, the project itself is to establish Zinc Eight Energy Solutions patented technology in its first commercial iteration, and we would be producing up to, well, up to about six gigabyte, gigawatts, about six gigawatts by 2027. And that is considerable. That's a lot of production. But this production and production from companies like ours are absolutely essential of states like New York and counties like Ulster County and countries like the United States are going to meet the requirement to decarbonize their economy and the environment. So, we're just one of those players that are here. We're very happy to have landed in New York State. New York State's been very good to us. The first contract that we got was with New York Power Authority, and it's about three years ago. They were looking for non-lithium technology, six hours and above in storage. We're a long-duration energy storage company. So, there was 102 companies, and we were very pleased to have been awarded the contract with NIPA. That particular project is 100 kilowatt, 1 megawatt hour, 1 megawatt project, and it's going to be constructed up on the north campus in New York here, Buffalo University. I've got some of my engineering team actually flying out there on Monday, Tuesday. Very shortly thereafter, we were in another competition with a private sector partner, Digital Energy from New York, and we were awarded significant contract supported by NYSERTA, and that project is going to be developed. It's a 100-kilowatt project. It's a 15-hour duration down at Fresh Meadows in Queens with the Cammon Bay Group. We've also been very lucky to have won a number of other awards in the state, including from the City of New York Building Department in support of Local Law 97, and they had a competition, and they said that we were one of the leading technologies to help decarbonize buildings in New York. And most recently, I guess, maybe not most recently, but the Real Estate Board of New York, which is going to have to contend with the investments that are required to decarbonize those 60,000 buildings in New York City, awarded us Best in Class to help them to get to those 40% carbon CO2 reductions. So, we're here tonight just to let you know that we're moving forward. We're very, very pleased with everything that's been given us from the state of New York, from the country, and from Ulster County. And it would be our intention, if we were able to secure the $10 million grant, sorry, bond, as well as some small sales tax abatements, I just want to make sure that the amount of the sales tax abatements is about 168,000 over the three years on sales of over $2 million locally. So, we're here tonight to listen, if anybody has any comments. We intend to be a good corporate citizen and a citizen in this county. We intend to take the beliefs that I have, my company has, and I think it's going to work well with the community. We've already met with many community leaders. We're looking at apprenticeship programs. We're looking at participation in a lot of community growth programs. But more than anything else, I think you'll find with us in your county, we will be a good corporate citizen that will draw other companies like ours that are socially minded to help develop the community and create well-paying, sustainable jobs in Ulster County. Okay? Jamie, do you want to?
It's a hard act to follow. Mr. Chairman, Counsel, thank you again for your time, ladies and gentlemen of the community. I've had the privilege of working with this company for over the last year or so, and, you know, your opening comments, Mr. Chairman, about the mission of the IDA just kind of hit me a little bit and how this project really fits into those, the mission of the IDA. And like you were saying, Ron, you know, development of, creation of very good jobs, sustainable jobs, making good use out of a space that's been underutilized for so long, and bringing this state-of-the-art technology to the U.S. where it isn't now. So, again, a great project. I think we hit on the metrics of everything. Nothing really, nothing really more to add, but just curious as to, you know, what comments are here, what questions we can answer for the community. But thank you for your time again.
Anyone else, Ron?
No, that's about it.
No, good. Thank you very much. So, at this time, I will now open the public hearing for public comment. It is approximately 7:24 PM. By the way of, well, actually, I'm going to defer over to Joe. I'm going to hand it off to Counsel right now.
Thank you, Chair, and then I'll hand it back to you.
There you go.
I'm going to read the rules as what I should do as Counsel, and then I'll pass it back to you to recognize participants in the public hearing. So, by way of operating rules, if you wish to make a public comment, please raise your hand, and the Chair will call on you. Please wait to be recognized. Once recognized, please stand and state your name and address for the record. Please keep your comments to three minutes so that all those present today may have a chance to comment for the record. If your comments mirror those of someone who has already spoken, you may so indicate and then relinquish the podium to another speaker so that all views represented at this hearing may be heard. When everyone has had the opportunity to speak, we will conclude this public hearing. A record of this public hearing will be prepared and reviewed by the members of the agency in connection with the agency's consideration of the proposed project. In order to ensure that the public has adequate time to provide comments to the agency on this proposed project, the agency will hold the comment period for this proposed project open until 5:00 PM, February 13th, 2023. All comments received by the close of business on that date will be included in the official record of the agency with respect to the proposed project. Again, the purpose of this public hearing is to solicit public comment. We're not here to answer questions. However, we will, in the course of this public hearing, consider questions, if we have the information, to answer the questions, and there is sufficient time to consider such questions. We will now ask if there is anyone attending the public hearing who wishes to comment on either location or nature of the project facility or the proposed financial assistance being contemplated by the agency with respect to the proposed project. Again, for the record, please state your name, indicate your comments on either the proposed project or the proposed financial assistance being contemplated by the agency with respect to the proposed project. And without, I'll pass it back to you, Chair.
Thank you, Joe. So, at this time, we'll allow all those present to present their views. So, let's see. So, Rick, you're up.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, everybody. I'm dismayed by a three-minute limit that takes me that long to introduce myself. I'm Rick Jones, for the record, from the Town of Rochester in Ulster County. And to make this very short somewhat, I'm 100% behind this project. It's a testimony to the activity of a lot of people, the county, the Town of Ulster, and the company themselves, to come to a site that had been abandoned for so long. And it's great that it's a green project, and maybe it's the beginning of something really terrific for Ulster County in terms of industrial, an industrial facility supported by the IDA. My comments are primarily around perhaps cautionary comments and/or just reminders. And I think, Chair, you did state some of the things that I had con- and I think, Chair, you did state some of the things that I had concerned with, concerns with, and it sounds like those are going to be covered. But clearly, everybody in this room knows that the IDA grants either tax-exempt bonds or pilot, this is a tax-exempt bond, in lieu of or the nexus of some sort of public benefit that the company provides, and generally, that public benefit is in terms of jobs. In this case, it's my understanding, and it was confirmed by Ron, that it'll be two-hundred-and-ninety-eight FTE jobs at the end of three years. So this project is one of the probably first large bonded projects that the IDA has done in a long time. The last one that I can remember of this size was one given to Westchester Medical Center, which at that time had been Kingston and Benedictine Hospitals, and I know that the long, people of longstanding in the IDA are aware of some of the problems we had with that bond in terms of performance around the number of jobs that were promised. So I know the IDA Board knows that, and so my cautionary advice to the Board and plea to the Board is to make sure that this project, while not a pilot with all of the detailed pilot reporting, still has to report the number of jobs that are being promised at the end of the three years. And I heard Ron mention something about additional jobs after, in the second, I'll call it the second phase. The other thing that I didn't see addressed, and I hope will be addressed, is a part of what the IDA likes to see is that the construction jobs are done by or performed by people that are part of the regional workforce, and the regional workforce we defined as persons from either Ulster County or contiguous counties, and we have percentages which are somewhat flexible, but a regional workforce and/or workforce that is paid prevailing wage. We all know what prevailing wage is and the difficulty of ensuring that to happen, but that's one item that I haven't seen addressed as much as the number of FTEs that are going to be delivered. So I hope that prevailing wage and/or regional workforce is part of what the IDA insists on in terms of this project, and that it's actually tracked, and I know that we have a tracking mechanism, an auditing firm that actually does that, so it needs to be checked, that along with workman's compensation and those sorts of things. And the only other comment that I have is the fee for this project is going to come out to be, give or take, about a hundred thousand dollars, one percent of the bonded amount of ten million, and it would be nice, since I'm sure the IDA's budget is through the roof, or rather, bank account is through the roof, it'd be nice to see a good portion of that, those monies, instead of sitting there, could be plowed back into the community in terms of job training, perhaps specifically for this project, and/or other projects that might be in the I Eighty-Seven total project. So I think that could certainly be something to be justified, plowing back whatever some of the fees are that come from the people who come into this I Eighty-Seven project. Some of those fees are plowed back in terms of training, or perhaps even around housing, although we spent a lot of time debating the, how the IDA can support housing. So that's it, very much in favor of it, very happy to see that, I was going to say American ingenuity, in this case, it's Canadian ingenuity. You would have been pulling it out if we had beat you. Worked out too well. We could always use a fifty-first state, if you're interested, but it's always great to see ingenuity that flies in the face of naysayers. I can recall, a long time, I've been a proponent of green energy for a very long time. Well, you know, when the sun goes out, how are you going to capture the energy? How are you going to store it? Well, these guys figured out a way of storing it, which, ten years ago, people said, we'll figure it out, just give us times. So the ingenuity of science and people dedicated to getting a job done, it's just terrific, and it's great to see that it's coming to Ulster County, and we'll have it first.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Thank you. Supervisor Quigley, I know you're on here, so I was going to ask you, I see you mark no, but see if you have any questions, comments?
James Quigley, Supervisor of the Town of Ulster. Most of the community thinks I live here, so that'll be my address. I have four short points. For number one, the agency, I would ask that the agency respect the fact that the project is in the Town of Ulster, not in Kingston. We are quite proud of our community and would like to see it respected. The second thing relates to a comment that Mr. Jones just made in reference to benefits from the economic receipts that the IDA will be receiving. When David O'Hara was Chairman of the IDA many, many years ago, and the Town of Ulster was generating large amounts of fee income, we had discussions that never came to fruition because we never had an appropriate product, project, but the benefits that are generated in the Town of Ulster by the fees, I would hope, stay in the Town of Ulster. We have many, many capital improvement programs that are required to be undertaken to promote economic development, specifically in case of I Park. The town is looking at substantial investment in water and sewer facilities to make sure we have adequate water and sewer resources to the project. Third, as to the application that was read, the benefits stated did not indicate that a pilot was being sought. I would like clarification if the application would ever be revised to include a pilot, and that is something that we have an aversion to without consultation. And my last comment relates to the public announcements of this public hearing and the press conference of last Thursday. I think it should be known to the community that the Supervisor's Office has received many, many inquiries as to what benefits were being provided to the company to induce them to come to this community. It was not clear, and the topic of that five-letter word, pilot, was frequently mentioned, which is why I call it to the attention of the IDA. The community does have some concerns. As you know, I have spoke in support of pilots. They have to be properly constructed and deliver the proper benefits to the community to be acceptable to us. We are not anti-pilot, we just want our say. Thank you.
Thank you, Town Supervisor. Is there anyone else that would like to comment? Is that the written? Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to comment? With no one else willing to comment or having anyone in the room to comment, okay, I will now move forward to close this public hearing. Before closing the public hearing, I will first ask Ron McDonald, who is appearing on behalf of the company, if he has any additional comments.
No, I think, just dropped the pen that I signed that agreement with last week, I can't leave it here. No, I think the last thing is, hopefully, you're going to see a lot more of us and our team, and, you know, we want to become part of a community. This is the community that we have chosen as a priority to become part of, and we're not going to be, come from aways. You know, we talk about that a lot down in eastern Canada, how to come from aways. So we want to be part of the fabric of this community, we want to grow with it, and we want to see success of the company also be successful for all the workers. One of the things that I have said in the past is that it's, you know, one of the mandates that I brought into the company to ensure that those people, the workers, our team that makes us successful, also share in the success. So we also have, like, we've got a, an options program, we've got an RSHU program, but it's the intention of the company, as we move into our first location, to also have a profit-sharing program, and we think that that's important. It's important for us to give back to the community that allows us to be successful. So that's, that would be it for me. Thank you all.
Thank you, Ron. I'll remind you all that the agency will hold the comment period for this proposed project open until five P.M. Friday, the thirteenth, two thousand and twen, or, five P.M. on February thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three. All comments received by the Close of Business Day on February thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three will be included in the official record of the agency with respect to the proposed project. Further, the meeting at which the agency will formally consider the comments received regarding the proposed project is scheduled for February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three at nine A.M. This meeting, like all meetings of the agency, is open to the public. So I will now close this public hearing at seven thirty-eight P.M. Thank you all for attending.